June 26, 2023 at 10 o'clock. It's a little before. Call this meeting to order for old call. Randy McPerkley.
Here.
David Hamel.
Here.
All right, here. Number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
I move we do so.
I'll second that.
Ayes?
Ayes.
Nays? Number five, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, June 12, 2023.
I move we do so.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number six, discuss possible action regarding the resolution to execute the certain project agreement for bridge and approaches on east-west dash nine Kylewall Road over Day Creek, local number 44, NBI 20125, project number J3 dash 6127 parentheses 004 parentheses, RB State Job Piece number 36127 parentheses 04 for District number one.
I move we approve so.
I'll second that.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
That's not the same.
Well, but it's the next.
It's the next one.
Yeah.
What's that bridge of?
That's a scenario up there.
Up north?
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, discuss possible action regarding the ODOT project maintenance, financing, and right-of-way agreement for bridge and approaches on east-west dash nine Kylewall Road over Day Creek, local number 44, NBI 20125 parentheses.
Now, I move we do so.
I'll second that.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
Just one place, Joe?
Uh-huh.
Number eight, discuss possible action regarding the appointment of AVAR Railcar Authority Board members.
This is what it is, redoing the ones that are on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody that's in there.
Poe, Bixler, and Todd.
Todd.
The last ones. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Ayes?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
A nays, no nays.
Number nine, approve, disapprove the appointments for the Woods County Industrial Development Authority.
Okay. Well, I think that's me that's on there. No, I'm on there since 26, so we're just, we're just redoing the years.
Same people.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much today is the same.
Bob Baker, Melissa Fisher, Brody Bush, myself, and Stan Klein.
I'll.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Ayes?
Aye.
So that's Al Baker.
Yes.
Barker.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have to tell Jimmy.
I didn't understand, but it is Bob Baker.
Okay. I thought maybe, I thought it was because he said something. I thought, well, I better ask him before I mark that bar out.
Room 10, discuss possible action regarding resale property fund financial statement.
And this is a financial statement that rolls through once a year after they have the resale.
I hadn't seen this, but Rachel told me it went really well, but they were really pleased. I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Looks like they got $213,610 in there now.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries.
What property was that on?
I didn't ask her. I don't know.
That's their sales.
I guess, yes. It's a, it's a.
It's a tax sale.
Yeah.
They don't hear.
One of the kind of taxes.
That's pretty good on the job for taxes.
Mm-hmm.
But she was probably not that much.
I don't know.
Maybe?
I'm not sure.
She wasn't talking fun how much, but she said it went well.
Yeah.
I didn't know what it is.
Number 11, discuss possible action regarding following road permits, Marsall Enterprises. And that's, I'm assuming that's the water line for the city out here to the south.
Yeah.
I thought they had two, two roads or three, maybe. He asked about boring them or cutting them, and I told him they probably better to bore. Because some of them was pretty, pretty, pretty used roads, you know. There might have been a driveway in there or something too.
I'll make the motion.
Rachel, do you see so?
Oh, give me a second. It's in your district, right?
Yeah, we all second it.
There's two of them, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, two of them.
I want to say there's two roads.
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
But they're both on that.
Two permits.
Right?
Oh.
Two permits.
Place is a 16-inch water line.
Yeah, they got two, two 16s side by side.
Number 12, discuss possible action regarding act of SIG FYI 2324 resolution and payment options for Woods County property and liability in the amount of $148,410.
That's for option one. If it's option two, it's almost $2,000 more.
I move we adopt option one.
I'll second that. And on that note, he said out there at CD the other day that, that probably it's going to go up more. They just, they just do it slowly.
He said.
Yeah.
I, he said something about claims that been, oh, no, it was statewide. It's, it's, can other states where they've had all the disasters?
Right.
That, that the cost of everything's went up, so, so essentially they're going to fall asleep with their act where in case we have a big disaster here, tornado or something, tear stuff up, things will go up, you know.
Yeah.
It's more like a price deal, but. So I'll make the motion. Or you did.
Yeah.
I second it.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
I didn't get the next one again. I was hoping it would come from the mail, but it didn't, so be no action on 13.
So just take no action on 13?
Uh-huh. Oh, here's the, the reservation, who's assigned it to.
Oh, for the first one?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
13th.
911.
The same thing, almost.
Yeah, but it's for 911 and they didn't, it didn't come in.
They're just separate.
So we'll skip 13 and go to 14. We'll take no action on 13 and go to 14. Discuss possible action to approve the payment of Erickson Steel Envoys using REIT grant funds for the Tacoma Fire Department REIT Grant number WD-23 dash 10 and sign the reimbursement form in the amount of $25,083.33.
And you'll need to sign it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Do we approve that?
I move we do so.
You'll second?
Yeah.
Because you made.
Ayes?
Aye.
I don't think there's a question. Is it just one possible sign?
Yeah.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Number 15, discuss possible action regarding bid number 222309, six month bid. Do we got this one, this one bid or?
Well, we probably need to see if we're gonna.
And it would not print off like it normally does. You have to flip the badge and it took less paper though.
Oil? We got oil, right? And organic?
Yeah, yeah.
Cabbages are. They didn't bid hot mix at all.
They never stop.
We can't go to Clinton. They'll sign off on that. It would just have to be wherever we, you know, Cummins or. Or nothing. Ain't gonna get enough from Clinton up here, done.
Right. Is that, do you think that's formal?
Yeah. They ain't usually the ones that get it.
Yeah.
But there's usually an outfit down in Clinton that does.
Mm-hmm.
And that overlands in Clinton too, but. Boy, isn't, isn't this an ODOT job that Cummins is doing down here at Greensboro Corner? That's Cummins that's doing that, and so is there a way we can piggyback off their price? It's ODOT job.
I think so. I mean, have to give the price. A lot of that stuff, have to be careful though. I mean, you talk to them because a lot of that stuff is bid late, which makes it a lot higher. I mean, they're.
Well, they're, they're one of them outfits that, that doesn't have to bid something for them.
They're what?
Cummins, they've got some, they've got some contractors that, that are just, do the work.
Well, but I'm, but the asphalt deal though, is what I'm trying to say is, is that the day later or somebody else subcontractor does in their bid, ODOT is.
Such and such price.
With, laid down.
Yeah.
Which, which is different than us thinking it is. That's delivered to there and applied.
For like $90 yard where it should be empty to buy, that's, have to check. I mean, I don't know any other options.
Why would they just bid?
I don't time to, single source kind of do almost. If we can't get to Clinton.
Yeah. And maybe they're, they're concerned about the oil price.
Well, I'm sure.
Up and down with that, the stuff that's going on, no bagging.
Eight and a half.
Yeah, we're.
That's just like last time, though. We can't go to Hoskins for a quarter.
Yeah, it's, it's 75 cents.
Difference, yeah. You can't drive the, you figure it's.
That's $25 or something.
Yeah.
A light, or thereabouts, figure a dollar a ton, and we're 25.
And it's 80 mile difference, you know, that's, duly worked that all up last time and got them to sign off on it.
The trouble is every time we go somewhere like that, it gets cooled off the time we get it here.
No, then we're not.
This is hit rock.
Oh, rock, rock, rock. Well, same deal, kind of, we didn't, we didn't get cold.
Well, it's, it's $25 cheaper than it costs you 150 to go down.
To drive that.
Yeah. By the time you're having to count your man hours and your gas.
Yeah.
Wear and tear on your truck, for sure.
It's kind of, it's kind of like it was last time.
Yeah.
So you guys just need to pick on that one, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it from our coast that they have mileage.
Right.
It's mileage difference.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they've got 3/8 cover on their Galici. With good business in the way this time, they didn't have it last time. And I'm assuming that this one here is the Enid.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see Galici has any 3/8.
Yeah, right here.
Shot, 3/8 shot.
3/8 number two cover.
Number two cover, nobody has it.
Right, that's what I was talking about. 3/8 shot is, is a cover.
They'll give me one.
I don't think.
That's probably, that's probably got a bunch of little stuff in it or something. I don't really don't know. I'd get a question to ask them.
But they didn't give a price.
They got 5/8 cover. That's what I'm interested in. Probably no price in either. Seeing last time they didn't have it at Cooper's, and they had it in. Right, nobody's got that number two cover for ten of them. That's probably the stuff we need.
A little bit used on a 4th grade 1/8 deep.
On what?
Pipe on her, on her, on page five, eight. She's got, I understand where she's gonna get them the same price. But there's differences there, and she's got them both marked.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Wonder why? She wants to get highlight copies.
Well, I mean, I didn't know. That's why I said I was confused on that deal.
Yeah, me too. The ones that are same, I'm like, yeah, I get that, but not these others.
They're the same price, but pick one of them?
No, there's some of them that if they're the same price, but she's got DP Supply and Core and Main, and she's got them both marked and they're different prices on several of those counties there.
Yeah, so she needs to take this highlight and cut it off on some of, yeah. I'll have to redo that page where it's a little clearer.
I mean, I'm all about using low bid. I don't know, so it doesn't matter, but, you know.
But yeah, it'd make it easier to identify.
We don't have a low bid marked there.
Yeah, yeah. I'll have to redo that page.
I did think maybe she messed up. I don't know this. Maybe she told me Schroeder bid on the last day last week.
Mm-hmm.
And she's got an hour close cost of water.
Oh, okay, she's coming in.
Okay.
She's running that page.
But I mean, she told me Schroeder bid, so I don't know.
Yeah, so we need to get that fixed too.
But Listerburg may have bid that. I don't know. What you had there before.
Truck that?
Water Hall, the very last deal. She's got a home deal that I wouldn't think anybody's bid on. Well, when she, if she just told me that Schroeder was on when they bid, when they was asking about it, that she doesn't have to listen on there.
What about the saltwater agreeing?
Well, I wondered if that's what, what we're talking about there on the last bid. I don't know, but I guess we need to verify it. I thought you told me Schroeder bid. Okay. Well, you got this 110 plus cost of water.
That's, he added, okay, that's just something, he added in this list for this belly dump. He did belly dump, end up in water truck is what he was doing. But that's, he just added all of those together, so I'll have to look at it.
Well, it doesn't matter. I think Schroeder's the only source to get brine water, single source brine water delivered.
Yes, and for your arm thing, he is, yeah, he's the only one that pays it.
Anyway.
Apologize about that.
That's okay.
I just, I was just confused.
Well, I thought there's.
The same, yeah. Hey, it happens.
I would say that.
Can you make a coffee for each one of those guys with color?
I think it's, hey, there's a different page by what she's got, you know.
The one behind that A.
Five A.
There's, there's several of them. Oh, oh.
Yeah, that's the one.
This, this is redone. Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the replacement for that one.
Okay.
Yep. I'll read it to you.
Five A.
She replaced the.
She's replacing five A with low bids.
Okay.
Well, all I see is, is take low bid or single source or what, you know, on all of them except for on that.
Argosa.
The hot mix.
Yeah.
And Argosa on the, on the inch and a half structure.
So, uh, I'm gonna circle that. Argosa.
Has that been, is it in motion?
Yes.
And that's for all of you?
Well, I mean, if everybody wants to do that.
No, I'll get that. Keep the lowest that. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the hot mix. Don't, did you see that?
Hot mix.
Well, we don't know. I guess we'll just have to.
Have a conversation.
Yeah, well, we don't know what, no Cummins is gonna jar genuinely.
Yeah, we gotta talk to them and talk to them and.
Yeah, we'll just have to compare if we, when we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And find out.
I mean, I'm sure they'll be doing that all summer.
Well, they usually do, but I mean, the, the deal is, is if they didn't bid though, is the problem.
Yeah, well, I know. Have we got a low bid, but we can't get to it.
But yeah, too far to haul it.
Yeah, so it's complicated, but we, I think we can make it work.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we accept it as we revise the, our, the inch and a half pressure run. And the hot mix is just gonna have to be.
Did they have?
Yeah, I mean, we, what it all boils down to is we have our time getting all the way to Clint and back with.
Without a setup.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Alright, Dave? Was, was ballot lady good, was her ballot bid again?
Um, yeah, she, she would like to, um, choose Royal, Royal, that Royal company.
I'll make the motion too.
Here, let me, uh, read, discuss possible action regarding a bid number twenty-two, twenty-three, ten, annual ballot bids. That's her next item.
Royal printing, I think is.
Numbers.
Yeah, Royal printing.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ayes?
Aye.
Ready?
Alright, thanks.
Motion's adjourned, roll over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome. However, thank you for five A, I'm sure this is a five A.
Okay, go on.
Is there any paper we need to sign with that ballot bid stuff?
No.
Not yet. Number seventeen. Discuss possible action regarding an Albert Police request for the use of the parking lot to conference room on May third and fourth for the third annual barbecue fundraiser.
So they're wanting to go ahead and get their name in for that weekend, for those days. Um, these are the ones that didn't pick up their trash, left all the mess.
That's, uh.
That's something we need to.
We met it through us and this.
Got to clean up their mess. And they're gonna do this, and, and, you know. We don't mind them using our stuff, but we don't like cleaning up after them.
Mm-hmm.
That's not an issue.
I agree.
Right.
They need to clean their stuff up.
So do we wanna approve it, or just put that speculation in there or let that?
That's next year. Yeah, I mean, can we amend this, there's. Yeah, might not occur if we, if we.
For everybody.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Which I thought it was, but it's in there about cleaning up, but maybe not. Trash must be picked up outside, maybe, well, they left a big mess inside, so maybe I need to add out inside.
Whatever, wherever they use.
Because I mean, if, we're letting them use the, the conference room. Which we could completely just tell them they can't even use inside the building, yeah, so I mean, we're being nice, and then they're not.
Returning the favor.
Yeah, they're leaving a stinky mess.
I'm good with whatever you guys wanna do, or however you want to.
I have to revise it if not.
And we have, then we have time to tell them. But if we approve it, and then they say, well, we'll do what we want, you approve it, you know, I don't like that.
Yeah.
Where, where do you read that, oh, trash must be picked up.
I thought we had it in there.
But it says buildings must be cleaned after getting mess. I mean, really, I mean, we've got it in there, they just didn't follow.
Well.
Maybe we just need to rectify with them, but they need to follow the rules.
I think before we, I think before we approve it, that, that they need to.
Address that.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as I understand, they may not be, if we approve it and just circle that, it's already in there and they didn't do it once.
Right.
So.
We're gonna do the table or?
Not.
You could do that or whatever.
Yeah, is it table, we gotta do it, they can see.
Take the action on, have a conversation.
And they can bring it back after.
And when they're assured to take and take care of their business, then we'll approve it.
Sounds good.
Number eighteen. Discuss possible action regarding the surplus and junk battery charger ID number D four, four, eight, dash, zero, zero, three for District Three. What it is, is that one of them little old, uh, truck battery chargers and it's quit. There's no fix in it and, and I haven't thrown it away, but I'm, I'm going to now.
Okay.
Is that a motion, John?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, so there's two pages, but John will need to sign up here too, John. You'll need to sign up here plus, but then there's two pages.
Okay.
And that last one, do we need to, and this is just a question, do we really need to make a motion to take no action because they need to?
Address.
Have a, really, I don't, I.
Well, I mean, if, if it's, if we just go back and make a, a deal that they have to clean up and the, the reason we're taking no action. Then it's, then it's listed, is what I'm getting at, the reason.
I'm with you with that.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion due, due to the mess they left last year.
Yeah.
Where we want it understood.
Yeah, this is, I'll second.
That was backed up on seventeen.
Backed up there on seventeen.
Rather than just take no action, I mean, they, they need to know, and we ought to have it in the minutes.
I agree.
I agree with that. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Now, number eighteen. Discuss possible action regarding surplus and junk battery charger ID number four, eight, dash, three for District Three, and that's a motion.
I'll second.
Ayes?
Yeah, so it's two pages, we have to sign. Ones for surplus.
And I have another one that, I wish you'd have put them both on there, but. They've, they've not worked for three or four years.
So we're gonna give you the numbers and we'll.
Right here?
Next time, yes, right there, and then there's a second page.
Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Motion's adjourned. Number nineteen. Discuss possible action regarding the resolution surplus and junk, a workstation drafting table for the assessor ID number H one, one, three, point, one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And I think it's already been disposed of, so we'll do it there.
Two pages there too.
Ayes? Motion's adjourned. Number twenty, discuss possible action regarding the approved, approved affidavit for completion for the Winoka Fire Department brief grant number WD two, three, dash, four that purchased a twenty-twenty-three Ford F-150 truck from Confidence Ford of Norman with state contract number SW zero, zero, three, five.
And, and, just, okay, so. Friday afternoon, I received this, and what it is, is a reimbursement for the last of the money that we had, and it's for five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and thirty-six cents that we're gonna pay to Winoka, because Winoka sent us the receipts of to K and S and to G and G Electronics of the rest of the stuff they put on, some of the stuff they put on the truck. We're not paying the full amount, we're just paying what's left on the agreement. Yeah, so I don't know if we can do this along with that. I mean, it kinda needs to be done since we're doing the completion, but like I say, didn't receive this until after, so. I didn't have it as a separate, but I think if we put it in this, in my minutes, I could put it in the same.
Did, did we encumber the money for this pull now? It's, it was encumbered, so.
I encumbered it Friday.
Oh, oh, okay, well, I mean, into that brief grant account?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, if we're good with that, I don't see any reason we can't approve this.
That's what I thought.
The volume's in there.
It's getting encumbered and it'll be paid on July tenth, so.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes?
Just another one to spot.
There's the completion form, and I think it's just.
I'm just going there.
Just drawing, uh-huh.
Right down here on the seven.
Mm-hmm. Want to sign your name on this print.
Number twenty-one, through the dis, through the blanket purchase order.
How many would you say will second that?
Aye? Ayes? Number twenty-two, new business.
I've got new business, uh, Greg's retirement party, Greg Hypholz. It's gonna be July thirty-first from two to four, and they would like to use the lobby, if you guys don't want them to use no lobby as a church.
I think that's great.
If we do that, yeah. Looks like a winner. Number twenty-three, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ayes?